We got. Very good. Okay, so I called to order the meeting of. I haven't lost my notes. Called order the meeting of the Inland Wetlands Agency Mansfield, Connecticut. March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at six oh one P M. Members present are Ahoa Corsi, Chandy Cooley, Tony Ross, Tameko Wuch. My, oh, and. Alternate Ward, who is seated for absent member DeVivo. I don't see DeVivo.
DeVivo appears to be present, but on a black screen.
Oh, that's right. John, are you here? Yes, he's here. Okay, good. Okay. So we have all nine regular members. Okay, very good. We have. Minutes to approve from. Uh, March sixth. And I want to say for the record that I did listen to the recording and. You know, did a great job. Congratulations.
Thanks.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second by Chandy.
Okay, thank you. Move by for Tony second by Chandy. Any, uh, any comments? All, all in favor? Okay, minutes are passed unanimously. There were, there were some communications from the Conservation Commission Monthly Agent Report. I guess our major business tonight will be to select a peer review consultant for reviewing two applications. And remember that the. The consultants are paid for by the applicants. So this is something that helps us out a lot. So we have to choose between. Two submissions. Jennifer, you want to give us a? Some words about this?
I'm, I'm going to hand this over to your new environmental planner slash inland wetlands agent as he's been taking care of this agenda item.
Very good. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, so what you have before you, you have two proposals. Uh, we sent out to five members of the on-call list. Uh, we only received two proposals back. Um, one from Land Tech and one from Trinkus Engineering. Staff recommendation here would be that the same consultant be selected for both of these as they are by the same applicant and are part of a larger complex occurring on the two separate properties. Looking at the pricing, um, Trinkus Engineering does come in slightly below Land Tech's estimates. Um, as, and the costs are ever so slightly different per property. Land Tech is, uh. If I just open these up here, I believe Land Tech is quoting us, uh, twenty-one, five hundred, uh, for the review on each individual property. Whereas Trinkus Engineering's, uh, estimates move around a little bit. One is a bit more expensive. The other is a bit cheaper, but they don't. They're both in the neighborhood of between forty to forty-five thousand for a comprehensive review on the two properties.
And of course, we don't pay for it.
No, we forced someone else to pay for it. It is the burden borne by the applicant, uh, that they accept when they come in with a large project for proposal like this.
So we, but we can really choose the one we wish to have.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Um, do you have any recommendations for us?
I have, I have never worked with Land Tech. I have worked, uh, with Mr. Trinks in the past. Um, from everything I've read from of Land Tech, they're both eminently qualified. Um, so in my limited capacity working for the town, uh, I can't speak to, uh, either one in particular. I think it would be well served to have either. I have noted that the commission has, uh, enjoyed the work of Land Tech in the past, um, from the various selections that you have made, uh, in, uh, the minutes that I've read of, uh, previous meetings. Um, but that is the only comment I have to make.
Any, um. Preferences from commission members? I know we have worked with Land Tech in the past.
He also worked with Trinkhouse, uh, for one oh six stores road.
Oh, that's right. Uh huh, right. Should we, uh, should we go with Land Tech? Comments? Yeah, Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, I think, I think that would be fine. I think that we're, we're very fortunate that, um, we have two very qualified, uh, applicants for, um, for this RFP. And, and looking at the proposals, they, they do look fairly similar. Um. So I, 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 I don't think it matters too much. I think I personally really prefer the way, uh, Land Tech presents their. Um, information to us. I, I find that really easy to read. Um, although, you know, I, I didn't, I thought, uh, Mr. Shkals also did, uh, a reasonable job with the, I think it was the champagne motors. Side, so. Yep.
Any other comments on that?
And are we? Question is. Uh, you know, forgive me, I haven't reviewed both proposals to make comparison, but. Are they, are we comparing apples to apples completely or?
That is correct, Commissioner. The, um, uh, they, they both received the same RFP, which had the same, um, scale of work. Um, and the same documents were provided to them for, uh, their, um, preliminary review. So yes, everything appears to me at least to be apples to apples.
And it's a flat rate. It's not like, or it's not an hourly rate and they're estimating the hours.
Uh, I believe that is correct. Jennifer, you've done more of these.
There, it's an, I mean, right now it's an hourly rate, but they're assuming certain, a certain number of meetings and all of that. So, um, generally, the, the way we, we, we execute the contract is that they cannot go over that fixed amount unless they come back to the town. And so in some instances, we do return funds back to the applicant. So.
And when you look at the, a total that is quoted, uh, you know, the A plus B, which one is lower?
Trinkas is a little bit lower, right, Michael?
Trinkus comes in at about forty-one, one, whereas Land Tech comes in at forty-three even. Thousands, to clarify.
Yes, Luann.
Sorry, and, uh, just, just for everyone's identification, the, the difference really lies in the, a number of hours. Uh, that Trinkhouse is quoting for the civil engineer on the, which is this? Uh, on the five, five, five middle turnpike site and they're. They're quoting, uh, quite a few hours less.
What's the difference?
Would someone like to put, um, a name forward in a motion? Yeah, go ahead, Larry. We can't hear you, but it doesn't say you're muted.
Your microphone might not be connected, Mr. Ross.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm just, because I'm so new at this, I'm curious as to if the applicant is paying. And there's such a minimal difference between the two. Why is it a question?
It's not a question for me.
Okay.
I mean, just for, just for the, for the new members, these are, you, you, when we get, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission and Inland Wetlands Agency qualified. Consultants. So, uh, when you get a large application, we're sending the, that RFP, you know, the, and all the materials that we get with that application to your qualified list of consultants. So, um, and that we just did, you did that. We staff worked with you to do that so that you could quickly choose someone and we wouldn't have to, and you would know that. You know, you felt pretty comfortable with their work. So Land Tech has done quite a bit of work in the four corners for, um, the agency. Um, and then Trinkhouse, Trinkhouse has done the work at one oh six, um, Stores Road. So I think it's whoever you feel comfortable with. Um, and I don't know that it's like kind of six of one, half dozen of the other. And if, if Land Tech is adding, you know, if they're adding more hours, then. They're, they're only going to bill us for what they, what they, um. Work.
But Jennifer, when you say bill us and then we bill the applicant.
Right, that's right.
The applicant, uh, I believe the applicant puts down a deposit beforehand for the build amount, uh, so that there's, the town is never out money. And then we return what remains at the end.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Bill, did you want to say something?
Your microphone's off, Bill.
Yeah, I, uh, I'd just like to put a motion on that we choose Land Tech, uh, as our, uh, agent.
Okay. All right.
I would second that.
Moved by Tameko, second by Cooley. Any discussion?
You, you do have a formal motion.
There's a formal motion. Would you like to read the formal motion, Bill?
It's on the, um, it's in the package. So, um, and if you are, I can read the motion that is so just, so it's formally read into the record if, if you don't have it.
You can put it on, you can put it on the screen too for Bill, right?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, that'll make it easier for him.
Um, we, we didn't type it up because it's such a, so let me just share my screen real quick. You read that. Wait, I'm trying to figure out how I, how do I increase this? Can you see this one right here?
Uh, authorize staff to engage the services of Land Tech to provide independent review of the application. Pursuant to eight point six of Mansfield's inland wetlands regulations, fees incurred for this review will be the responsibility of the applicant. And a deposit in the amount of the estimated cost shall be received prior to the issuance of a notice to proceed. I'm Bill Tameko and I, that's my motion.
Okay, moved by Tameko, second, I believe, by, by Cooley. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? This is unanimously. Now we have to do the same thing.
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
I raised my hand only to say that I have to recuse myself from voting on this because I'm out of butter of the land.
Okay, all right, all right.
So I'm not voting.
Okay. Thank you.
Eight zero zero.
Okay, so we have to do the whole thing all over again for the property right next door, the same applicant.
As you do.
Billy, you want to do that again for us?
Did though. Authorize staff to engage the services of Land Tech to promote. To provide, excuse me, independent review of the application pursuant to eight point six of Mansfield's. Inland Wetlands Regulations Fees incurred for this review will be the responsibility of the applicant. And a deposit in the amount of the estimated cost shall be received prior to the issuance of a notice to proceed. That's my motion.
Okay. Move by Tameko.
Second.
Second by, uh, Cooley. All in favor? Okay.
I have to recuse myself from this one also, as I am again, I have a butter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe that, uh, is all we need to do with inland wetlands, although maybe, oh, go ahead, Luann.
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, to make a brief point about, um. Mansfield inland wetlands regulation eight point six, uh, and just point out that not all towns do this, uh, have the applicants pay for the, um, assessment. And it's something that I think is, is really beneficial to the town to make sure that we have an independent review that we are, um, not foisted the cost on, on the taxpayers. So I think that's, I think we should just put that in the record and note that that is the case. So. Good for us.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, maybe this will be a good moment to discuss, uh. The possibility of moving to a hybrid meeting. For IWA and PZC. I'd, I'd be interested in, uh, going to a hybrid meeting where we, some of us move, uh, some of us. Uh. Are in person in Town Hall. Um. I would like to do that. Would anyone else like to join me in the Town Hall in person? Yes, I see some.
I can't until probably maybe May. I'm still not driving.
It, it'll be hybrid and you'll be, uh, and we have huge screens in there. If you've ever seen the Town Council.
I have.
There's three huge screens. So the people who are, are remote really do feel part of the action.
Very good.
So, yeah, you'll be, you'll be right in the midst of things. Jennifer, is it possible for us to, uh, move to hybrid at our next meeting?
If, if you'll have a quorum at the next, well, yes, we can definitely move to hybrid at the next meeting. So, um.
We're, we're getting back to normal. I hope.
Out a year and a half after people started saying that too.
Right, we're, we're really quick. Okay, so, uh, inland wetlands, uh, is, uh, we're conclude the inland wetlands meeting at six seventeen P M. And open the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at six seventeen P M with members present Ahoa Corsi, Chandy Cooley, DeVivo for Tony, Ross, Tameko and Wuch, and alternate, uh, Ward. We have minutes from March sixth to approve. And for the record, I did listen to the minutes. Yes, Luann.
I'd like to, um, note that there is a, a, a problem in the first little bit that says that Offo, uh, Ho opened the meeting, but you were not there. So that should be changed to Chandy.
I wasn't there at all. Okay, good. I'm glad you caught that. Okay, with that correction. Would anyone like to move to approve the minutes?
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Move by.
Go ahead.
Second by Chandy. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, minutes are approved unanimously. We have a public hearing tonight. Oh, no, we don't. That's been continued.
Well. You still have to open it.
Oh, we have to open it and close it.
And, and, and we read the legal notice and then continue it to a time and place certain. And remember that it would be to the hybrid meeting in four South Eagleville Road. Um, so where you can continue that.
Okay. So, um. Is, is Michael gonna do the, um, boilerplate? Presentation of, of, uh, has he been, has he been briefed on how to open a public hearing?
Well, this is gonna be, Jaleen is gonna take care of this, and I don't know that we need to, um, do the boilerplate since we are continuing.
Okay. Okay.
So, but, um, Jaleen, um, can read the legal notice. This has been a.
Okay.
Project. She's been kind of spearheading, or she has been spearheading. So, um, but we'll make sure Michael is briefed on the boilerplate, um, before the next inland wetlands agency meeting.
You'll love, you'll love that. It's a lot of fun. Okay, take it away, Jaleen.
Okay, so the following was, uh, published in the Will Manic Chronicle on Wednesday, March.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I think, um, you have to open the public hearing.
Right, right, right.
Public hearing, take it to, uh, note who is seated and then Jaleen will, will write, read the notice and then we will.
I'm sorry.
The, a public hearing to a time and place certain.
Okay.
So, um, we do have an individual who's just emailed us who's trying to get on the Zoom. Um, so I'm wondering if we should read. If I could read the, um. If I can find. The, um. The link for him, or if Sandy, could you, um, work with that individual who's trying to get on the Zoom?
Yeah, so I'm working with them. Okay.
Just trying to listen, not to do the public hearing, right? Just to listen.
I'm not sure.
Okay, because we're, we're gonna continue it anyway, so.
Okay.
It won't matter, yeah. Okay, so, uh, I opened the public hearing at six twenty P M. Uh, members present are Ahoa Corsi, Chandy Cooley, DeVivo for Tony Ross, Tameko Wuch, and alternate Vera Ward. We have a, a public notice to be read.
Okay.
Now we're up to Jaleen.
Did you say the time?
Yes, six twenty.
Twenty. Uh, so the following notice was published in the Will Manic Chronicle on Wednesday, March eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and Thursday, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The Mansfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearing on Monday, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three via a web-based virtual meeting to hear comments regarding the following application. Six o'clock P M, application of Andrew Oliver Rudis applicant for special permit for additional uses to include an indoor/outdoor farmers market and arts and antiques market on property located at twelve Merrill Road, parcel ID seven dot eleven dot eleven, owned by. M A D Mad Holdings LLC, file number P seven one four dash two. Information on how to participate in the public hearing will be included in the meeting agenda available at least forty-eight hours prior to the hearing in the town's agenda center. No information from the public shall be received after the close of the public hearing. Additional information regarding these, this application is available in the Mansfield Planning Office, A P Beck Municipal Building for South Eagleville Road, Mansfield, Connecticut, oh six two six eight, or by emailing planzoneDEPT at mansfieldct.org.
Okay, thank you. And we have a motion to continue the hearing. To. Okay, so, um, whoever reads that, uh, remember to say that it's a hybrid. Meeting, uh, actually be held at four South Eagleville Road.
Yep. Do you want me to share my screen, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Whoops, wrong one. Oh, can everybody see that? Can you see move to continue?
Yeah, yeah.
I can put that forward.
Okay, thank you.
Like you sent him the zone, like, he wants to talk about desegregated. Hi, Shandy, move to continue. Uh, the public hearing regarding the application of Andrew Oliver Brothers. Applicant for special permit for additional users to include an indoor/outdoor farmers market and arts and antiques market on property located at twelve Merrill Road, parcel ID seven dot eleven dot eleven, owned by Mad Holdings LLC. File number P seven one four dash two to April third, two thousand twenty-three at six oh five P M via hybrid meeting. Uh, with, um, in-person location at South Eagleville Road.
Very good. Moved by Chandy.
Um. I, I would just say for South Eagleville Road, uh, the Mansfield Town Hall for South Eagleville Road.
Okay.
That's, okay, I accept the correction.
Okay.
I will second that.
Second by DeVivo. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Public hearing is, uh, oh, we have to, we need a motion to close the hearing, right? And no, that was it. That continued it is like closing it, not.
Correct, Mr. Chair. You don't want to close the hearing.
We don't want to close it. We continued it. Right, got it. Okay, so.
Yeah, Bill would like to say something, Mr. Chair.
Bill, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick question from a, uh, a new member. Why is it continued? Is, is, is it continued because somebody asked to have it continued?
Yeah, so staff is continuing to work with the applicant to, um, finalize his plans. Uh, we needed a little bit more time and we had already, um. Publicized the public hearing, so, um, we decided, uh, it would be in the best interest of everybody to just open it and continue it. And we'll take public comment and a presentation from the applicant at the next meeting.
Okay, so it was continued at six twenty-five P M. Um, so that's, there's no old business. New business is the zoning regulation rewrite update.
So I did put this on in two spots, actually, and we can, we could probably talk it over, um, and under zoning regulations and design guidelines, so. Uh, because that's where I have the attachments. So apologies for that confusion. Does that make? Yeah.
So you're gonna put something up on the?
Oh, no, I was just gonna, um. I, I have two items. This, these are sort of standing business items.
Okay.
Uh, the new business, well, your new business, if we could talk about it under zoning regulations and design guidelines under item.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna talk about it.
Sorry about that. And then you can go into desegregate Connecticut. That would be your next agenda item.
Okay. So we have a, a debriefing about the, the desegregate Connecticut initiative. And this is a debriefing that does not include public comment, uh, but it's a discussion among ourselves. So I, I think, um. What I heard at that, uh, the, uh, that. In that particular initiative. Was a rather large density, um, considered for. Uh, areas that would be under this transportation. Parcel, the transportation. Parcels that are located close enough to transportation. Uh, but the town, if, if this bill should pass, the town does have to decide whether to opt in or opt out of it. Now, Jennifer, is that something that we decide or is that something the Town Council decides?
I, I think the details of that are, are unclear as of now, but I would most likely, um, it, it would probably be a joint initiative, kind of like the, the ADUs, but.
That would, that would make sense that it would be a joint. Yeah, right.
Um, so, so basically you have to designate this, um, you, you create this transit-oriented community district. And that's along a rail or bus route. So, um, and the, basically, um, you have to opt in. But if you do not opt in, um. The town would, would not be eligible for certain discretionary state funding. Um, so. I know that they had the public hearing on that on March fifteenth. I haven't had a chance to kind of, um. Find out where this is going. Um, there are many. A lot of bills in the legislature are being proposed right now to, um. For, to increase density around transit affordable housing. So it's just something the commission should, you know, keep an eye on and, um, just be aware of. Um, if it is something that you want to weigh in on or provide testimony, the way that would work is, um, and it's coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission or the town, and you're not speaking as an individual, we would, I believe it needs to come jointly from the Town Council and Planning and Zoning Commission, but I could get feedback and, and I could provide guidance on that.
There's also the possibility that the bill may never pass, so we won't have to make any decision whatsoever.
That is true. Yep.
Anyone like to comment on that? Now. I think it'll become evident in a few months whether it's going to, has any chance of passing and then we could, uh. Look at it. In more detail later.
When I checked after last time's meeting, there was only one race bill related to this. Is that correct, Jen? Uh, race bill one one four one.
Um, this one is H B. Uh, H, I just had it up, sorry. It's, um. Um, H B sixty-eight ninety.
Sixty-eight ninety?
Yep.
So I, I think that, um. There's no need to take any action tonight on this, so we'll, I think we can just see how that progresses.
Yep.
Okay, so now we could get to zoning regulation and design guidelines. Zoning re, reorganization.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is just really the, for, for members of the Regulatory Review Committee, you were, um, at the meeting on, I believe it was Tuesday with Tyke. And, um, we reviewed, they reviewed articles one through four. Their memo says one through five. and um we reviewed, they reviewed articles one through four. Their memo says one through five. Um, so they, they're in the process, uh obviously, we've been doing, talking about this for quite a while, of just really looking at the zoning regulations, reorganizing them, looking at um the legal and best practices. And that's what they have done for articles one through four. Um, the Regulatory Review Committee sort of gave them the the thumbs up and said, continue along with this. Um, they will be bringing this forth to the full commission so that you can have a public hearing sometime later in um April. So you would um have, you'd have this on your agenda. You would then schedule a public hearing. You would refer this out to um the the CROGS and um to other folks as necessary, and then there would be a public hearing. And then hopefully you would be ready to go with these new regulations um with placeholders for some of the more um meaty versions, like small lot, single family, or riparian quarter zoning, things that um will want to get some more public input into and, but I just wanted to make sure that this was on the agenda so that the full commission had the opportunity just to ask questions or um review this or um or you know, tell us, give staff feedback as well as probably the rest of the Regulatory Review Committee would welcome that as well.
Yes, Bill, go ahead. You're muted.
Yeah, um, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Yes. Um, Jennifer, what's the the charge that we have to these people? Is it just to to reorganize, or is it to actually evaluate our regulations?
So right now, um, the the charge is that we are, the the Planning and Zoning Commission are the really, the, well, the full commission really agreed to this is that just to really um reorganize the regulations without making any substantive changes. Because, Bill, you've you've really done a deep dive into our regulations, and you probably know that um they're challenging to read. Um, they're not really cross-referenced. So the charge we've given to Tyke is to update these regulations, reorganize them. They do this for towns all over Connecticut. They that, they are then gonna be moving, they'll reorganize it, we'll adopt them, then we will move them onto an online platform, Ecode three sixty, which is what the town uses for its code of ordinances. And there'll be, there'll be several placeholders for for subject matter areas that you have been wanting to kind of really evaluate. Um, and and tho- those will be done at a future date.
One of the things that I've noticed uh with the the document you gave us. Um. They have moved the information over to their document. But they've moved the typos and everything that's in our document. They've moved it over to their document.
So. Yeah.
Yeah, so if the typos in our document is now into their document. In addition, a lot of of wordsmithing, um, I I like their, I like their charts. I like their tables. Um, there is a lot of places where a new person is reading this thing, and they have to go hunting for abbreviation, try to figure out what the abbreviation is that should be tabled at the bottom of the table. And I know this is not a meeting to do wordsmithing and asking these, all these questions. Is there a place where we could actually sit at the table and go through these in detail? Um, even if. I'm I'm reading this thing, and I see your definition or our definition or their definition is all the same of a basement. And I'm saying, how the heck did they come up with that definition for a basement?
It's not them. The that definition is a legacy definition from our um old zoning regulations. And certainly something like um a definition of a basement might be something we'd want to fix right now because I don't know that folks would really have an issue if we are making that clearer, but um.
And 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 maybe a definition for a ferocious animal. I mean, I've really enjoyed this, to tell you the guys, God's honest truth.
That's why we're glad you're on this commission, Bill.
But but there's a lot of things that uh for a newbie looking at it, you come up with a lot of questions. And and I think there's a way to to make it a little more specific and to make it a little more readable, even their, even their final document that are are draft that you've given us, making it a little more readable.
I I would be happy to sit down with you and take um like typos and, because it's you're, I can see that you're very detail oriented. And but if there's some sort of substantive issue, um then I think the full commission will need to look at that. But what I'm hearing from you is that it's more um like real detailed wordsmithing without changing any meaning at all. Is that, is that basically?
Uh, pretty much so. There's a couple of places where I wonder if it would be beneficial to have a a definition uh uh on a a bunch of different thing, uh on on some different things that would make it a a little less um. Um. Uh, it a little less weak. Uh, it would, it would be a little bit more defined and.
And one point is, is that this is, this, they will be going through and and getting typos out. Um, that will be a direction, a directive from staff. So if there are, even if there are typos, as long as it doesn't change the meaning, we will be um, I I'm gonna ask them to do that, and and staff will also be taking a deeper dive at this um or deeper look at this, so um. But I think I'm happy to take your red line, and then if if folks wanna um look at this, then I think the Regulatory Review should, it should begin there and then move to the full commission. But I'm seeing that folks may have other opinions about that.
Okay, we have uh Michael and then Luann. Michael, you have your hand up. You have your, you have your artificial hand up. Okay. You didn't mean to do that. Okay, Luann.
Uh, I was just gonna second everything Jennifer just said. Um, I I think this is, uh, Bill, I think this is fantastic. You're going through and having all these questions because um, you know, you you as the new member really are um are representing the the public as, you know, someone coming to this, uh trying to understand what we're, what we're doing. Um, so I, but I completely agree. I think the thing to do would be to to um take, take a copy of this and highlight or redline the areas where you have questions. Um, and then we could look at it at Regulatory Review. That would be, they think, the appropriate venue um to look at those things and anything that anyone else wants to bring. So all of us should be doing this, should be looking through and highlighting those areas that we see issues or problems. Uh, and then we can look at it at Greg Review um and um those areas that have a legal context where there's a a definition that may need to be added. That's something for the whole commission to take on. Um, we can't, we have to be very cautious about taking things out and changing words because they do have a legal context. Sometimes, even if it seems like it's, you know, a simple wording like basement seems like something someone, every everyone should know, but it's in there because everything that's in there is there for a reason. You know, that it probably came up at one time, and uh even if that context for that is now changed and, but we need to, you know, evaluate it.
I bet, I bet nineteen fifty-eight, this started as a four-page document. Now it's so, so large. But guys, just look, just look at page one nineteen and try to figure out how we're supposed to do anything with page one nineteen.
Let's let, let's let Katie uh time in here.
My question is on our insertion. I'm part of the Sustainability Committee, and one thing that we would like to see in the regulations is some deconstruction language, uh prompting contractors to be uh uh more uh. I guess when they're taking down buildings and ripping up parkway driveways and stuff like that to get rid of the materials in a more uh better way, in a more, you know, sustainable type way. And uh I have been working on some stuff on it. But so that prompted me to read some of the uh regulations quite well, too. To say there isn't any deconstruction in there. It only deals with soils, topsoils, rocks, that type of debris. It puts the all of the debris under miscellaneous debris. Uh, if I was to write something up, would I send it directly to the Regulatory Commission, the Regulatory Review Committee?
Katie, you could send that to staff, and we would make sure that um folks get it. And I think what, when we're doing this, we want to make sure there's probably another town that has like a, um, I think it's a a construction and demolition debris um is what I think some towns call it. Yeah, so um, looking at, we all, we want to look at what other towns have been doing, so we're not reinventing the wheel.
Okay, you said something that if I bring up the word, some of the wording in that, send it to your staff. They'll do the stuff of looking at other towns, or do you want me to look at other towns?
I I think, why don't you, if you send me an email, I can discuss this with Tyke.
Okay. I shall work on it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Katie. Bill, did you want to say anything else?
No, I I I just wanted to thank Luann uh for her uh, her advice. It's very good advice. Thank you.
Great.
And and Bill, I I think at the first meeting that I went to, um, when I was a first and alternate, uh, one of the topics under discussion was removing a a regulation that had to do with uh prohibiting keeping of foxes, which I thought was very funny.
Can't trust those foxes. Okay, any other comments on this? Good, good comments, and uh, yeah, we'll try to get this, all these regulations as clear as possible.
One anecdote is, everybody can tell by my accent, I come from Maine. In Maine, a lot of times we refer to a bathroom as the basement. We'll go into the basement. Because our bathrooms were always in the basement. They weren't on the first level. So I could see a confusion that way, to some people's thinking.
Yes, Bill.
Just one more. Uh, Jennifer, when when these guys give you their drafts, are they sending it over to you electronically, or are they making a PDF file and sending it to you?
A PDF file and sending it to us electronically.
Because the the uh, the documents uh seem like they're squirreled, uh they're squirrely because maybe the, some of the, the electronics is getting squirreled. I mean, even the pagination is off on these documents. So I wondered uh uh if i- if it could have something to do with um uh the the programs they're using. That's all.
Yeah, right. Let's, I think, Bill, if, let's, let's put a time on the calendar, and we can go through this. They, they were, our Word document for these regulations was very thoroughly formatted. So it's very hard to thoroughly unformat it. So some of that is like happening from from there. But yes, no, um, we can absolutely talk about that.
Okay, very good. Um, we should also, during this meeting, mention that we're going to meet at four South Eagleville Road. For the record, okay. So for the record, how many people would like to join me at four South Eagleville Road? Okay, I think we have enough people to to uh initiate a hybrid format. Uh, so at our next meeting, we will meet in the town council chambers, and they have very good uh screens, three huge screens. Um, that, so I think everyone will feel like they're participating, whether they're or not. And members of the public can come and sit and watch us and make comments when appropriate. Okay, is there anything else we need to do tonight?
That is it.
That is it. We are adjourned at six forty-four PM and see you at town hall.